Good morning.
Yuba County Board of Supervisors' local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
So can you do the welcome?
Welcome to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors meeting. As a courtesy to others, please turn off cell phones or other electronic devices which may disrupt the meeting. If attending via Zoom, please have your microphones muted at times when you are not speaking. All items on the agenda other than correspondence and board and staff member reports are considered items for which the board may take action. The public will be given opportunity to comment on action items on the agenda when the item is heard, and comments shall be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
Okay, consent agenda, we have one little adjustment. We're moving item 401 off of consent over to departments. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be action items that are routine and can be enacted in one motion. Do we have any board comments on any agenda items? Any public comments? A motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 401.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. So, moving on. Presentations. I don't believe we have any. Yes. Yeah, so we're gonna go to public comment. Okay, public communications.
Any person may speak about any subject of concern provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. And through the chair, our first person is Tony Farley.
How are you doing today?
Good morning. Good morning, Tony.
Bonjour. Bonjour. Good morning.
Okay. Kevin, Kevin Kinevish here, Navy service, Jan Benner, Navy service, good best legal attorney, Don Blazer, District Two, big cowboy forward stat today, like he was saying to you, John Misk, nerd guy, ready to back for him, see some day that caps the caps convention. And Seth, diverse candidate ever, what diverse candidate? They heard think, um, they're thinking, Matt Conde here, thank Rachel, Sarah, the sheriff, probation chief, they get to repo guy, repo guy, thanks to repo guy. They get to, to Rachel, and also the two, what capital seal there, two bars over there. Thank you, thank you, Oscar, Sarah. Navy service.
Thanks, Tony.
The second person is John Sullivan.
Welcome, John.
Welcome. Can you hear me? Hi, I'm John Sullivan, third and fourth generation native California-born American family. We're standing our ground. California is where we live. I was standing in this room on May 29th, and I know that California is not supposed to burn to the ground every time the wind blows. Well, the wind's blowing and there's fires everywhere. Here, I think that some simple solutions to help mitigate the problem could possibly stop it or thwart the fires that are going on. We smell the smoke. We see them everywhere. Number one, a good fire vegetation abatement program, why the firefighters are working on the tail end and trying to fight this five-foot tall grass and deal with these fires after the fact. I don't, it's beyond me. I think that flyers on the fences or like what I have, I have a contractor that lived across the street from me. He moved, but he split the lot. Made hundreds of thousands of dollars on the property that he sold, but he split the lot so he could save a piece of the pie. And now he's left five-foot grass across the street while he builds 10 houses somewhere else. And these people should be getting a letter in the mail to let them know that they need to take their fuel off the ground because that's what it's like to leave them gas. So, good abatement program. The second thing is the Dixie Fire was started by a professor, the social justice warrior burned a million acres to the ground. One firefighter died, 1,329 properties destroyed. And he got five years in jail and $13,000 fine. I don't, I think it's a lopsided charge. I think that he should get a minimum of attempted murder charges or when people are present, multiple attempted murder charges or even at the max terrorism charges as well. The third thing is ahead of time, this whole fireworks stand here, I'm from the coast originally. They're banned, the fireworks on the beaches, but they sell fireworks up here. I love fireworks. But this is an election year and people are crazy. I think that the fireworks stands should be taking down a plate number of the car and an identification. So there's a logbook for investigations after the fact. So in the case of a fire, then the investigators can go back and look and say, hey, look, this guy bought it, or it'll help prevent potential arsonists from buying these fireworks at these fireworks stands because you watch, the fires are gonna ramp up after that. I also want to add one last thing. I think the insurance companies are gonna respond positively to this, and we can bring our homeowner's insurance back. And like myself, I'm dealing with no homeowner's insurance. I've got pumps and a tank and I'm my own fire department, really. So that's about all I got to say. God bless and God bless America.
Thanks, John.
Next individual is Matthew Beeston.
Good morning. My name is Matthew Beeston. I am a representative of the NorCal Carpenters Union. We are an organization of more than 37,000 carpenters in Northern California. I am here today on behalf of the more than 500 union carpenters that live in Yuba County and would love to work in Yuba County. The NorCal Carpenters Union is working tirelessly to build up the lives of all carpenters, not just the members that we already represent. We want to improve the quality of life for all carpenters in Northern California, existing as an example for the rest of the construction industry to follow. Your citizens, our members, current and future, they're relying on collaboration between their elected officials and the NorCal Carpenters Union to make labor standards a priority on all construction projects. Labor standards such as apprenticeship, living wage, health care, and local hire, which are the core values of the NorCal Carpenters Union, have provided me the ability to establish a lifelong career, become a homeowner within my community, and provide health care for my family. Without these labor standards, construction workers are more likely to be subjected to inferior pay, no medical benefits, and inadequate training to do their job safely while traveling great distances. So I implore the council to ensure that all future building happens responsibly through a commitment to labor standards so that we can avoid low-road contractors in our communities that underpay their workers and potentially exploit their workforce. Thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to the day that these labor standards, apprenticeship, living wage, health care, and local hire are the minimum standards for all construction projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
The remaining requests to speak cards are on a specific item.
That's it? No Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom.
County departments. All matters listed under county departments are action items which will be considered and voted on separately. Item 401 will be the last one we do. The first one is item 383, which is human resources.
Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Morning. Good morning, your board chair. Tiffany Manuel, Human Resources Director and Risk Manager. With this item, this is a budget adjustment item, and I'm requesting your board approve the budget adjustment within our general insurance fund in the amount of $10,450 to be moved from contributions to professional services. The general insurance is used for the county's property insurance, which covers our properties, buildings, equipment, and vehicles. And the county received two separate reimbursements through the subrogation process following damages caused to county properties by the actions of other parties. And due to budget policy, the money is required to be deposited into the contributions account and then the transfer action to be approved by your board. By approving this adjustment request, the money will cover the cost of professional service charges. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does the board have any questions? Any public comments? So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
If I could, it's a four-fist vote, so a roll call vote would be in order.
Yes, roll call.
Supervisor Vasquez is absent. Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. 372, Tiffany, Human Resources.
Yes, I'm gonna be up here for a little bit. Again, Tiffany Manuel, Human Resources Director. Following the recent negotiations with most of our labor groups, today I have a few items on the agenda regarding wages and benefits for multiple groups of employees. I will do my best to get through these items as concisely as possible for you. But before I get into the details of this particular agenda item, I'd ask your board to recall the efforts of HR in the county administrator's office this past year as it relates to the compensation study that we did. We hired an outside consultant to conduct a total compensation study that included looking at external comparisons as well as internal comparisons and compaction issues. As advised by the consultant, the county expanded our comparable agencies for salary surveys to include our core four agencies of Nevada, Sutter, Butte, and Yolo Counties, along with City of Chico, City of Yuba City, Glen County, Tahama County, Placer County, and Lake County. The study resulted in equity adjustments to most classifications to bring them to market or to align them with internal comparisons, as well as classifications being assigned to a range number that is associated with a base salary. The range numbers starting with one, being minimum wage, have a half a percent in between each range. The reason for the range numbers is to ensure uniformity in pay among classes with similar knowledge, skills, and abilities. So just wanted to provide that context for you just because a majority of these items that I present to you, I'm gonna be referencing the equity adjustments in the range table. So with the first agenda item, I'm asking your board to approve the memorandum of understanding between Yuba County and the Deputy District Attorneys Association. With your approval, the agreement will be in place for a three-year term from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. There are many provisions within the MOU, but I will highlight the main provisions agreed to in this round of negotiations. First, the agreement to apply the county's salary survey and compensation study having the DDAA classifications placed in their applicable range. Effective January 1, 2025, the county's health insurance contribution will be 100% of the CalPERS Gold Employee Only Premium and 90% of the CalPERS Gold Employee Plus One and Employee Plus Family premiums. The dental and vision coverage will remain the same, which is 100% of the base plan for employee and 80% of the base plan Employee Plus One and Employee Plus Family premiums. I do want to point out in your staff report, I believe it was identified that the dental and vision plans were based upon the 100% and 90%, but that is incorrect. The dental and vision plans are 100% and 80%. Effective July 1, 2024, a 3% cost of living adjustment. July 1, 2025 and July 1, 2026, it would also include in each of those years, a COLA that would range from 1% to 3.5% depending upon the Consumer Price Index. The floating holidays are currently provided in a lump sum of 16 hours each calendar year, but effective July 1, employees will now accrue floating holidays earning two hours per month up to a maximum of a 24-hour cap. An addition of a 10-year longevity step for those hired on or after July 1, 2013, to bring this group in line with the rest of the bargaining groups. And to address recruitment and retention issues with attorneys effective July 1, 2024, the DDAA employees with a jurist doctor will receive a lump sum of $5,000. Newly hired DDAA employees with a JD who start between July 1, 2024 and June 30, 2027 would be eligible to submit proof of student loan payment for reimbursement of up to $500 per month, not to exceed $5,000. Management leave is currently provided in a lump sum of 56 hours. And effective July 1, employees would receive a 30-hour lump sum up to the cap of 60 hours and then beginning January 1, 2025, employees will accrue management leave earning five hours a month up to the cap. So I think that summarizes the main points. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
This is quite a process, as everybody knows. So this year, correct me if I'm incorrect, the salary survey, that's kind of a new approach for us?
It is.
And it seems like it's a good, could make things a little more consistent.
Yes, that is the plan. The county has spent many years kind of reacting, being very reactive to being below market in classifications. And it, you know, we spend a lot of time responding and reacting as departments make certain requests. And so this is something that county has not done, and I don't know, Kevin probably knows how long it's been, at least over a decade, if not two decades. And so we're really excited to have the opportunity to be able to do that.
Yeah, the whole salary situation is, to say the least, challenging. And it's getting a little more challenging all the time. Okay, so are there any board comments?
No.
Any public comment? I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, so motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
371, Tiffany?
Yes, hello again. Okay, so with this agenda item, just make sure I have the right one. With this agenda item, I'm asking your board for approval on the memorandum of understanding between Yuba County and the Yuba County Probation Peace Officers Association. With your approval, this agreement would also be in effect from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. And as with the last item presented, there are many general provisions within the labor agreement. I will highlight the main updated provisions. So first, again, an agreement with this group to apply the county salary survey and the compensation study having the PPOA classifications placed in their applicable range. The same health insurance provisions would apply effective January 1st with 100% the county's contribution being 100% of the CalPERS Gold Employee Only Premium and 90% of the CalPERS Gold Employee Plus One and Employee Plus Family premiums. Again, the dental and vision remain the same, 100% of the base plan for employee only and 80% of the base plan for employee plus one and employee plus family premiums. The same cost of living, 3% would be applicable July 1, 2024, and then in the following years of 2025 and 2026, the COLA would be a 1% to 3.5% dependent upon the Consumer Price Index. Floating holidays, again, currently provided in a lump sum, we would adjust that effective July 1 so that employees would now begin accruing two hours per month up to a cap of 24 hours. And then with this particular group, effective July 1, employees would no longer accrue CTO. And we made a modification to the accrual of their vacation hours. This particular group is one of the few groups that did not accrue vacation upon hire. They had to wait six months before they would get 48 hours, and then after one year, they would get another 48 hours. So with this group, we did kind of keep them in line with the rest of the groups and allow them to accrue eight hours of vacation upon hire each month. So for this group, I believe that summarizes the negotiations and what's being presented to your board. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I think it'd be helpful if you kind of explained the process we go through because all these numbers and everything you're saying really aren't a surprise to us because we're part of the process. It's not this something that's done in some back room. So maybe you can walk us through how you get to this point.
Well, in this particular case, well, first of all, the county had two contracts that were gonna be expiring June 30 of this year. That was YCEA, which I'll be presenting, I think, next, and then DDAA. So we had to go to the bargaining table with these groups. They have union representatives, as well as the county has a negotiator, and we basically just discuss wages and benefits and employment conditions with these groups. And there's some gives and there's some takes, and we apprise your board of, as we're going along and making sure that we're on the right track with what your board is okay with us doing. And of course, taking into consideration the county budget. And then ultimately, we come to an agreement and present it in open session. With the three safety groups, however, the PPOA, the one I just presented, our Deputy Sheriff's Association, and our management safety group, they are currently in contract, and their contract is not set to expire until June 30, 2025, but we did go to the table with them asking for an extension in order to ensure that we could get all county employees on the new range table and make salaries consistent as we were trying to deal with compaction issues as well. So they agreed to come to the table with us. I, it's likely in the following board meetings in July, we will probably be bringing agreements for those groups to your board as well.
Thanks. I just thought it was important that people know that we are actually part of the negotiations. Anybody on the board have a question? Any public comment? And a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Motion passes. Moving on.
Thank you.
To 373, or did? I lose track.
Yes. Okay, so with this agenda item, I'm asking your board for approval on the master labor agreement between Yuba County and the Yuba County Employees Association. With your approval, the agreement will be in place for a three-year term from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027. And as with the last two items presented, there are many general provisions within the labor agreement, but I'll highlight the main provisions that we agreed to in this round of negotiations. So the first four provisions that I'm gonna list, they're essentially the same as the last two. So agreement to apply the county's salary survey and compensation study and having YCEA classifications placed in their applicable range. The health insurance, again, effective January 1, 2025, the county's contribution is 100% of the CalPERS Gold Employee Only Premium and 90% of the CalPERS Gold Employee Plus One and Employee Plus Family premiums. The dental and vision would remain the same. The cost of living adjustment at 3% July 1, 2024, and then July 1, 2025 and 2026, it would also include a COLA of 1% to 3.5% dependent upon the Consumer Price Index. Floating holidays are being revised from the lump sum to accrue two hours each month up to a cap of 24 hours. There is an additional provision here for one group regarding protective footwear reimbursement, which has increased from $400 every two years to $300 annually for employees in classifications required to wear safety boots, and from zero to $100 annually for employees required to wear non-slip footwear. So I think that summarizes the main points of this contract, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions? Any public comments? And a motion?
I'll move to approve.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Tiffany, welcome back.
Okay, I think this is.
We are at number 376.
Okay, yeah, I think this is last one. So this one is a little bit more involved. There's a few items listed within this board item. The county's management, elected officials, and confidential employees are not represented formally in matters of salaries and benefits. Historically, these employees have followed labor group salary and benefit structures, and HR would bring to your board a staff report asking you to approve the application of the benefits given to the bargaining group to the non-represented groups. At this time, HR and the county administrator's office would like to implement memorializing salary and benefits for our non-represented groups in the form of resolutions. This will allow for consistent record-keeping and will help establish an acceptable record for CalPERS to use when processing non-represented employee retirements. So we have, we kind of have a historical listing of all the different approvals that your board has approved for the unrepresented groups. Having a resolution will bring it all into one place, memorializing it all. Plus, we have had a longer processing times for certain CalPERS retirements for non-represented employees just because of the record-keeping. So, and this is a concept that other counties also use as well. So with this agenda item, I am recommending to your board to approve a resolution adopting a compensation and benefit summary for the unrepresented miscellaneous management unit for the term of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Approve a resolution adopting a compensation and benefit salary for unrepresented miscellaneous elected officials for the term of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Approve a resolution adopting a compensation and benefit summary for unrepresented miscellaneous confidential unit, again, for the term July 1, 2024 through 2027, and adopt a resolution amending the county's classification system, our basic salary and hourly schedule, and the elected official classification system, the basic salary schedule effective July 1, 2024, to reflect the applicable classification and salary changes previously approved by your board through the 2024-2025 budgetary process and as a result of the county's compensation study. So the salary and benefits presented to your board in this agenda item for the non-represented miscellaneous management and confidential employees mostly mimic those presented in the prior agenda items. The resolution for the miscellaneous elected official only includes information on their salary, health insurance, and retirement, as that's what's applicable to those classifications. You have significant detail in your staff report and on the resolutions, but I will highlight the main provisions, trying to break it down by the resolutions because each resolution is slightly different. So listed on all of the resolutions, effective July 1, apply the county's salary survey and compensation study placing the classification apply the county's salary survey and compensation study placing the classification in their applicable range. Effective January 1, 2025, the same health insurance contributions of 100% of the PERS Gold Employee Only Premium, 90% of the CalPERS Gold Employee Plus One and Employee Plus Family premiums. The dental and vision would remain the same at 100% of the base and 80% of the Employee Plus One and Employee Plus Family. Effective July 1, a 3% cost of living adjustment. July 1, 2025 and 2026 would include a 1 to 3 and 1/2% COLA dependent upon the Consumer Price Index. The, well, all of them except for the elected officials have the floating holidays, which are currently 16 hours annually, changing to effective July 1. Employees would accrue two hours per month with a cap of 24 hours. Specifically listed in the unrepresented miscellaneous management resolution, the management leave is currently provided in a lump sum of 56 hours. So this is very similar to what I presented with the DDAA. July 1, 2024, employees would receive a 30-hour lump sum to the cap of 60 hours. And then beginning January 1, 2025, employees would accrue management leave earning five hours per month up to a cap of 60 hours. The unrepresented attorney classes would receive a lump sum of $5,000. New employees hired to the unrepresented attorney classes with a JD who start between July 1, 2024 and June 30, 2027 may submit proof of student loan payment for reimbursement of up to $500 per month, not to exceed a total reimbursement of $5,000. Each November, unrepresented management classes receive either an annual $400 or $500 management allowance depending upon their classification, so we would want to include that. The attorney, professional engineers and land surveyors receive or may be reimbursed for professional fees required for their classifications. And at-will management employees, as determined by the county administrator, would receive a vehicle allowance of $500 per month or what has been agreed to by your Board of Supervisors in the employment agreement, whichever is greater. So I think that summarizes all of those main points. I'd also just want to remind you that we do have other groups that I'll be bringing to your board in July, including a non-represented safety group. And then also today, on the resolution, since this was our first time putting these together, we did miss a couple of things that we noticed a little bit too late. And so just want to point out that we'll be bringing back to your board an amended resolution likely for the miscellaneous management classifications. There, we missed some language regarding a sick leave payout for long-term employees who leave the county. And also, there was a couple of classifications missed on the range identification. So anyway, we ask that your board approve the resolutions as they are presented today and we will bring the amended resolution to the next board meeting for your consideration. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, first of all, thank you for your efforts. I mean, I don't know how you guys do this.
I have a fantastic team.
Yes, thank you. And I don't even know how many different associations and groups you have to deal with.
We have five represented groups and then we have our unrepresented groups as well.
Yeah, okay. Well, thanks again. Any questions from the board? Any public comments? I don't see any. And a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Motion passes. Thanks again, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Okay, number 344, which is the Community Development and Services. And we have Ms. Rachel Downs.
Good morning. Chair Blazer, members of the board, Rachel Downs. I am your Business Engagement Manager out of Community Development. The item before you today is our annual contract with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. GSEC, otherwise stated, has been a trusted partner and an invaluable resource to Yuba County as we continue to enhance our competitiveness for business growth and relocations within our community. The GSEC team has provided customized research and analytical support on numerous projects, guidance, as we consider business or real estate incentives for companies as well as access to site selection opportunities. GSEC has a member structure, if you are familiar, that is both made up of private investors and public investors. On the public side, so fellow cities and counties, the peer-to-peer relationships with other business and economic development directors has provided examples on how to navigate projects like the Surplus Land Act, inspire new program development, like Yes to Startups, as well as innovative strategies to share across the region and solve shared problems. On the private side, GSEC's board is composed of arguably 50 of the most influential business leaders in the Sacramento region, including our own Enterprise Rancheria and Hard Rock Leadership. Not only are these private developers and businesses driving our regional economy, but I've personally had the opportunity to work with many of them as they consider doing business in or around Yuba County. So thus, the item before you today, staff recommends approving the attached agreement. Secondly, adopting a resolution to authorize the county administrator, administrator, sorry, Kevin, to execute the agreement. And thirdly, to identify the Board of Supervisors' number or designate to be the county representative. I also want to note that Supervisor Bradford has been our representative for a number of years and it would be our recommendation as staff to maintain that consistency. But I will defer that decision to your board. So those are the three action items in today's agenda.
Gary, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure, just a couple of quick comments. So Rachel, thank you for, for the presentation today on that and for your deep involvement with GSEC. I know you're very involved there and so I certainly appreciate that from a county perspective. I also appreciate you sharing the value to the county that GSEC brings. And I want to thank Barry Broome from GSEC for coming up from Sacramento today and being here for this item. Should there be any questions? I've served as the appointee or delegate appointee for Kevin since, since 2021. And I'm certainly interested in continuing to do that if that's the board's pleasure, so that's it.
Any other comments and any public comments? Gary, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve and also continue to allow me to serve in that position.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I, I think.
Oh, wait. Oh, excuse me. Public comment? Didn't I say that?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. So resolution is passed and thank you very much, Rachel.
Thank you.
Item 403, Kevin, Emergency Services.
Yes, good morning, Chair, members of the board, Kevin Mallon, Yuba County Administrator. So the item before you today is a result of the, the fire that occurred on June 16th at the Marysville Hotel, Marysville Hotel in the city of Marysville. So as the board is keenly aware, there's, there's, there's a lot going on in Marysville as a result of that fire. The city manager of the city of Marysville proclaimed an emergency last Friday, which triggered us adding this item to our agenda. He, he had since reached out to the county to ask for the county's support as the city seeks the state's support of that emergency declaration. The Marysville City Council, I believe, has a, a, a meeting later today to consider ratifying the city manager's proclamation of the emergency. So since the, the incident occurred on June 16th, the county's Office of Emergency Services, our Emergency Services Manager, Oscar Marin, in the audience? Yep. Wave your hands to that. Yeah, okay. So, so Oscar has been work, actively working with State OES to see what kind of resources are available to the city. And Oscar will continue to work with the city of Marysville through this process. But what, what is before you today, staff would recommend, we've, we've drafted a, a letter, provided a copy to the board. We'd recommend that the board authorize the chair to sign that letter so that we could submit it to CalOES and show the county's support of the city's endeavor to get a state declaration of emergency for this incident. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Not a question, but I do have a. But I, I, I do have a comment. So I know last, last Friday morning Supervisor Blazer and I did attend the Marysville City Council meeting where the council approved that emergency declaration, the initial emergency declaration. And there was a subsequent press release and I, or press conference. And I'd wanted to point out that in addition to representatives from the Board of Supervisors, there were also representatives from Sutter County, elected officials from Yuba City and even from the city of Oroville. And all those elected officials were there with the city to convey the regional impact of this item. And so the impact extends far beyond just the city. And so I'm very supportive of anything we can do to support the city as I believe the county and our constituents and even neighboring jurisdictions are also impacted by this.
Yes, it's, you know, Marysville is an important partner in this whole puzzle that we have in, in Yuba County. So yes, it's very important that we support him whatever way we can. Any other board comments?
Nope.
Any public comments? A motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, so passes. Thank you. So what we have left is 401, which has moved from consent to departments. That's going to be presented, I think, by Supervisor Fur. It has to do with adopting a resolution to approve support of a sister city relationship with the Chinese trade delegation. Seth?
So Wenchuan is a prefecture, prefecture, I'm going to say the same word correctly, incorrectly, in the southern tip of China and it would be equivalent to our county. They have a city of the same name therein. And always looking to expand our both cultural diversity, since I am the diversity supervisor, as well as the relationship we have with our own Chinese community and a rich heritage there with our Bakaai temple and parade. But more importantly and of immediate concern is of course economics. So we have quite a few farmers in our region and they export. And there's a lot of money to be made in those sales to the Chinese consumers. Our walnuts are known for their flavor and color. And although it's a niche market in China, since they supply much of their own and get the rest of theirs from Chile, they still do import from us. And anything we can do to increase walnut sales is going to be a big deal for our walnut farmers. I've actually invited Matt Conant here today to speak on this subject. He is a local farmer and many of you know him from his side job. So Matt, if you'd like to come up and talk about the importance of walnut exports in our area, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. I'm glad you came up because my memories of all this crop sales and everything go back about 50 years. I think things have changed, but I can bring this up to date.
Well, first of all, I'd like to give you a little history. I, I, as many of you know, I serve in the Board of Supervisors on the other side of the river. And by the way, we signed a resolution yesterday in support of Marysville as well and I was at the meeting. And I, I think we were one community, one, we maybe farm on either side of the river or live on either side of the river, we're all one community, work together, accomplish common goals. So that's why we signed the letter yesterday. Anyway, I did, as chairman. This is our little history. So we farm, we started farming on the Bear River about 1921. So 103 years ago. Where I'm the fourth, my son is a fourth generation farmer in Riosso. And we originally farmed in San Jose prior to that from the 1860s. And in America, 400 years, Salem, Massachusetts. My Roger Conant, my great-great-grandfather plus many times over, was the founder of Salem and the first governor appointed by the crown. And we're one of the original planer families and we're still farming in America today. But our family raises English walnuts and they require very, generally very deep soil. You can grow them on shallower soil, but usually life expectancy is a little shorter and yields are a little lower as well. We farmed along the Bear River. We're approximately a quarter mile from the Yuba County line. So that's my guess, I'd be not very far from you guys. And they require very deep soil and most of our ranch is got about 10 feet of new topsoil from the gold rush and the hydraulic mining. You can find apparent layer if you dig down 10 feet on our ranch and that is the original soil profile prior to the gold rush. And we sell a lot of walnuts all over the world, but we used to sell a lot more to China. And the Chinese market has really dried up. They are the number one producer of walnuts in the world. We're number two in America. I believe that you guys, as well as us in Sutter County, are the walnuts are the second commodity grown, dollars and tonnage wise. Peaches are like three or four in most counties in our area. And, and prunes and in the ballpark too. But walnuts, we still sell a lot presently to Europe and Asia, excluding China. We do sell a lot of walnuts also to like Turkey and India. And most of those go in shell and are hand-cracked there. And that's, and foreign sales are, being number two producer of walnuts in the world, are critical to our viability. And because of that lack of sales in China and other places in the world and a strong dollar and COVID really affected our ability to move product. We couldn't get shipping containers. We had a huge surplus, although it looks like most of the surplus is going to be gone on this year. But the walnut industry is in a really tough time right now. The cost of production of walnuts is roughly about 70, 75 cents, depending on the grower, actual cash cost. However, that doesn't include all the other costs like equipment purchases, replanning orchards, removal of old orchards, getting them ready to replant, new irrigation system. All that brings that cost up probably around a dollar a pound. And last year's average price was about 35 cents. So it doesn't take too much of a genius to see that we're bleeding capital. And this industry is really been hurting the last six years. The last three years in particular have been well below the cash cost of production. And so that's been very problematic for our industry. And, but we do grace the best walnuts in the world here in California. We have the best food safety requirements. We have mandatory testing of DFA, which dry food not advisory every walnuts shipped overseas or is all graded and even domestically. And so when everything is sold, the consumer gets a very high-quality product. The other thing we do that we've done in California for the last 40 years roughly is mandatory pesticide reporting. That many places in the world don't do that, especially in China. And, but when you go to the third major producer that's a competitor of ours, Chile, they raise walnuts that are harvested opposite ours. So they just finished their harvest for this year and they are, but there's a cooler climate. They produce a lot lighter color meat, higher, higher quality even than us in California. But they, they're a friendly competitor. It seems to be a fair trade system with them and they fill markets that we don't fill. And their crop looks like it's going to be down in here. And they're pretty much all sold out for this year. So the walnuts, it looks like it's doing a little better. And we hope the price is going to be significantly up from last year. And that's kind of what I wanted to talk about a little bit. I mean, I hope that answers some questions for the board and the community. Is there any questions you guys had for me?
Well, my memory goes back a long ways and it seems like in the past, the way, the marketing of various crops went by way of associations or organizations. It's kind of the same way now. How do you market your?
Well, most, we have no co-op left in California. We used to have Diamond Walnut. It's now a publicly, well, actually a publicly owned company that is not a co-op at all. And everybody just competes for the same market share. And there is a problem, I think, in our industry that we don't have enough people that are doing value-added products. that are doing value added products that are trying to find their own niche. Everybody seems to want to put it in a bag and ship it. And that seems to be a, a problem. Um, oh, and it seems to be very competitive amongst the, the sellers, uh, and processors of walnuts to, to not really come up with a new, uh, use for walnuts, like walnut milk and candy walnuts and things like that. And Diamond did a lot of that. They haven't done as much and pushed that market as much as they used to.
So rice is big, uh, and I assume they have a, more of a central bargaining plan.
If I may, Chairman, in addition to, uh, Mr. Conant, we also have Todd here from our agricultural department to answer on other subjects other than walnuts.
Okay. Well, thank you. Is there any other questions?
Thank you so much, Matt. I appreciate your contribution.
I hope that was what you guys wanted here. It was just kind of a generality over the whole industry and try to cover that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
So if you have any other agricultural questions, I also have Todd. Um, and he can talk to you about our twenty twenty-one numbers, our exports. And again, how important it is to have trade partners. Uh, the particular hope here with the trade delegation is by building that relationship. We're going to be building and adding an extra market, much like what Rachel talked about with GSEC earlier. Uh, we want to always, when possible, be in that networking frame of mind so that we can increase our, uh, play and reach.
Chair, members of the board, Todd Quinss, Assistant Ag Commissioner. So, uh, Supervisor Fur reached out to me yesterday, just wanted me to provide you with some of our.
Go a little closer.
How's that?
Better?
Yeah. Just wanted me to, to provide you guys with some of our export numbers and specifically to, to China is what I concentrated on. Did, did I misread that or is that fine? Okay. So in China, so I look back in our crop report and, and some other programs that we use and, um, went from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three. And since twenty twenty-one, China's been our, um, top export country. Um, by quite a bit, actually. Uh, although we do not send a lot of commodities to China. In those, in the past three years, we've only sent, uh, prunes and, and walnuts. Um, and I've got some numbers here. So I'll start with prunes. In prunes in twenty twenty-one, we sent, um, five point four million pounds, and this is approximate. There's some estimations going on here. Uh, about five point four million pounds worth approximately five point two million dollars. Um, and that is about eighteen percent of our total production here in the county of prunes. Uh, twenty twenty-two, we sent six point five million pounds of prunes, or yes, prunes to China worth approximately six point six million dollars. And that was approximately twenty-two, twenty-three percent of our total production. Um, walnuts, so sorry, uh, twenty twenty-three, we sent two point six million pounds. But at this time, the, the total worth is not known to us. We, we work on our crop reports a year behind, so we're currently working on twenty twenty-three right now. Um, and so we'll have those numbers for you in the next month or two. Um, walnuts, as Mr. Conan alluded to, uh, not nearly as much as we used to. So in twenty twenty-one, out of Yuba County, we sent seven, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand pounds worth approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's only one percent of our Yuba County walnut crop. Um, twenty twenty-two, we had one point four million pounds worth approximately four, four hundred and thirty-seven, uh, thousand dollars. So as you can see, the, the total pounds doubled. But, uh, the price was about cut in half and that's due to a lot of factors. Um, and, and that was about two percent of our total production here in Yuba County. Um, twenty twenty-three, we do know that we've sent so far, we did send five hundred and four thousand pounds, but we don't know the, the total price or amount of that yet. Um, you have any specific questions on anything?
I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out the contribution that this delegation is going to be towards marketing walnuts.
Sure. So the.
Compared to what we're doing now.
So, so we're, we're making millions of dollars selling to China. We've made millions more in the past with a higher volume of export. And anything we can do to increase our exports is going to put millions of dollars more into our pockets. And when I say our, I mean the residents and farmers of Yuba County. So anything that we can do to promote trade, much like when we did GSEC and we're a member of them to promote the opportunity for more jobs, we want to promote the opportunity to have more sales. So that's why the trade delegation is going to be coming tomorrow. We're going to be making it, having a tour of various facilities and farms in our area. And hopefully, uh, they're going to think, hey, we want some high quality walnuts. Yuba County is the place to get them.
I just haven't quite figured out who they are. Uh, this is a basically a county in China?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we have another walnut farmer on the panel here. Do you have any comments, John?
Well, I would like to add to Matt Conant's comments that Yuba Sutter and Butte County produce the highest quality of walnuts in the entire state of California. That's, uh, known fact. We just have a better climate here, so. Um, it would, you can use that tonight or tomorrow in your presentation. Seth, we do produce higher quality walnuts here locally.
So there's about five, uh, things on the resolution, um, that they have kind of spelled out. Uh, one of them is becoming a sister city, which is fairly common. Um, city of Marysville has one, I believe. Um, I'm, and, um, I'm not sure, uh, what their influence is going to be as far as developing trade. I don't know how much of a player they are, but every little bit helps, but can, do you know how, explain who these people are?
Um, sure. So I mean, their county, uh, equivalent, our county, their prefecture, uh, has, I think, eight hundred thousand population, right? Um, so they are a small part of, uh, over a billion dollar, a billion person population. Um, however, anytime we can get a foothold in a market, um, that's always a good thing. So I'm, I'm not saying that this one resolution by us is going to solve all economic problems for our county for the future eternally. I'm saying that we're going to be promoting sales, we're going to be creating a relationship, and we're going to hopefully, uh, see some fruit or even walnuts from that in the future.
So when you say we, you're talking about the county?
Yes.
And how does this affect county personnel or how do we communicate and promote trade with China?
Well, so I'm taking time tomorrow to be part of the trade delegation's tour. Um, certain people such as Matt and, uh, Matthews and Bishop have all agreed to let, to open up their farms so that the trade delegation can see what we're doing here in our area. Um, as far as what it's going to consume or cost the county, it's costing us the time of this meeting to approve it. Um, other than that, we don't have a requirement or responsibility. But much like we did with Gambia, uh, two years ago, when we made a sister county resolution with them, it was in the hopes of helping, uh, those, that community and our community to grow closer together. Um, we have not borne any walnuts, uh, from that particular agreement. Um, I still have my thirty thousand books in my barn, sadly, um, they did not take them. Uh, but, uh, my hope is that, uh, this one will, uh, bear more fruit.
Well, obviously we want to try everything we can. Um, my only thought is that there might be a duplication of effort on all the, you know, the counties, the states and everybody trying to develop these relationships. So, uh, I think it, it's probably good to do what we can, but I would take very slow steps on this. Yeah. Any other comments from the board?
Ju- just, uh, what I believe I've heard and I just want clarification is essentially we're, uh, the proposal is to establish a sister city relationship or sister county relationship, uh, really just, uh, to make a statement of a desire to, uh, focus on cooperation and increase trade to the extent possible. And so really it's kind of a, it's just a statement about our commitment to work together. That's my understanding.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, and we'll probably find out pretty soon if it's going to go anywhere for the next year, probably. We'll see. Any other comments? Any public comments?
All right. Do we have a motion?
I saw move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No, so that motion does pass. Yes.
All right.
Pardons in public hearings, Natalie, can you read that off?
Any person may speak about any, I apologize, that's the wrong one. Okay. If you challenge in court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use, or environmental, environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group.
And first we have number three sixty-six, County Administrator.
Yes.
Yes.
Nice and loud over here, Natalie. Thank, thank you. It's so, uh, Chair, members of the board, good morning, uh, Kevin Mallon, Yuba County Administrator. Is that loud enough? We're okay? All right. So the item, uh, that I'm presenting, uh, to the board, uh, for consideration this morning is, uh, to introduce a new chapter to Yuba County Ordinance Code. Uh, so this new chapter would reside in Title Eight of the Yuba County Ordinance Code, uh, which is our public peace and safety, uh, section of our ordinance code. Uh, so Title Eight is where we, we have other chapters. Uh, for example, uh, we have a chapter that addresses, uh, star bin boat ramp use. Uh, it's actually referenced in this, uh, the chapter that's being introduced today as well. Uh, and it's, it's where we have, uh, regulations on use of county parks, uh, uses at Bullard's Bar, uh, uses at, uh, Camp Far West Reservoir. So, uh, the, the ordinance code, uh, is, is where, um, the board can establish, uh, uses and also an enforcement of those uses which, uh, provides, uh, you know, the public orderly, um, use and recreation of a particular area. So, so how did, how do we end up needing to introduce a chapter specific to this area? So, um, I start with, uh, the, the picture that's up on your screen. Uh, that's, that's the Feather River levee, uh, where it broke in nineteen ninety-seven, uh, near Country Club. And, uh, this, that, that, that's, that's, that, that levee, um, is no longer in place. Uh, but, uh, subsequent to the, the ninety-seven flood, uh, that, that levee was repaired in place by the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, and then in the early two thousands, the Army Corps of Engineers, and this was at a national level, uh, kind of reevaluated levee standards and, uh, determined that, that really levees, um, needed to be, uh, built, uh, better in order to, to, to provide one hundred year of, uh, flood protection uh, to our areas. And so in the early two thousands, uh, you, you ended up with, um, the, the need to address, uh, our, our levee systems in, in Yuba County. Uh, and, uh, this, this resulted in the, uh, the eventual setback of the Feather River levee, which I'll get into in creation of this area. So, um, the, the, this, uh, setback area that we're going to talk about in the ordinance, it, it was created, uh, because of the, the setback of the Feather River levee. Uh, and, uh, and that setback of the levee, uh, was constructed by the Three Rivers Levee Improvement Authority, which was a, a joint powers authority that was created by the county and Reclamation District seven eighty-four, uh, to do all of those levee improvements that I referenced, that the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, kind of said needed to be done in order to maintain, uh, one hundred year flood protection. And, uh, what, what resulted when they evaluated the existing Feather River levee is, uh, is that it, it really was necessary, um, reconstraining the levee in place or building it bigger and stronger, um, really wasn't going to provide, uh, our community, uh, necessary flood protection. And so what was recommended, uh, was that there was about a six mile stretch of that levee, uh, that it was recommended that it be set back as much, it, it, and, and it, and the setback ended up being, um, over a, a half mile setback in some locations. And so as part of the, the, the project, uh, Trilla not only, um, constructed six miles of new levee, but, um, Trilla also had to acquire, um, sixteen hundred acres of property that was basically between the old levee and the new levee. And, uh, that, that property is still held by, by Trilla. Uh, and, and there's a, there's a number of, of, uh, uses on that sixteen hundred acres by Trilla. There's the conservation banks, uh, that were part of, uh, uh, mitigation for the, the, the levee projects. Uh, there's existing agriculture that was behind a levee and then now within a floodway, but still able to be farmed. And so Trilla is holding, um, agricultural leases on those grounds and, and allowing the farmers to continue to farm those areas. Uh, but, uh, that, that entire area, um, that, that was created in the set, uh, within the setback, uh, is still owned by Three Rivers, uh, Levee Improvement. So, uh, it, and also as part of, uh, the, the levee setback, uh, project, uh, there was, there's a number of county roads that, that deadended into the old levee. And then when the levee was moved back, the, um, county abandoned the, the county roads between the old levee and the new levee. So there's, there's currently within that sixteen hundred acres that's owned by Three Rivers Levee Improvement Authority. There's no county roads, uh, i- in that area. There's no, um, public easements for access, uh, through that area. Um, in, any access within that Feather River setback area would be what was, what, what's granted, uh, by the Three Rivers Levee Improvement. And so the, so, uh, so since two thousand nine, um, the Three Rivers Levee Improvement Authority, um, has allowed public access within that sixteen hundred acres. Uh, the Three Rivers Levee, Levee Improvement Authority, uh, adopted, uh, their own ordinance to kind of outline those activities and designated routes. Um, but, uh, what, what has resulted, uh, since, uh, two thousand nine within the, 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 the Feather River setback area has been, uh, a number of activities that really aren't in alignment with, um, the, the purpose of, of that area, which is a flood control, uh, feature. Uh, and, uh, and, and really, uh, has, has been, um, kind of detrimental to, to the lands. And then also the, the detrimental to the public's ability to safely access, uh, the Feather River. So, um, just, uh, we, we pulled together some, some statistics for, for the board, uh, and for the public. Um, we, we've had, uh, over the last year, our Sheriff's Department, um, over a hundred calls for service, uh, that have, that, that, um, originated, um, in this Feather River, uh, setback area. Uh, a lot of times, uh, the, the response to those areas, um, it, it are in locations outside of those designated routes that Three Rivers has, has chosen and, and which makes it difficult, uh, for emergency response. Uh, the, um, I, I've, I've provided here, uh, for the board kind of a, an overview of those, um, hundred calls over this past year and kind of a breakdown of the, the different types of calls for service. So they, they definitely, uh, vary from, uh, you know, medical aid, uh, you know, uh, traffic related, uh, calls for service. Uh, but also, uh, more, um, you know, we have violent crime, uh, calls for service, uh, as, as well and, and fire. And, uh, stolen vehicles, um, which, uh, is, is, is pretty common, uh, down there for, um, the, the county, uh, code enforcement to have to continually, uh, abate, stolen vehicles that are usually burned and abandoned on, on Trilla lands and then, uh, go through the abatement process to remove them from the property. All right. Uh, so speaking of county code enforcement, uh, and this is something the county has been doing for a number of years to assist, uh, both the state and the Three Rivers Levee Improvement Authority with kind of the, the battle of blight on, on their lands in this Feather River setback area. Uh, so code enforcement has a weekly process, uh, where on Mondays they go and, and basically do, uh, trash cleanup within that area, uh, li- literally a pan crew with, uh, you know, a truck and trailer. Uh, and so, uh, and, and weekly, there's hundreds of pounds of refuse that gets pulled out of, uh, the area in addition to the, uh, you know, stolen vehicles, as I mentioned before, that are burned and abandoned down there. Uh, and it's just kind of a reference point. Uh, so this past Memorial Day last month, uh, on that Monday after Memorial Day, uh, the, uh, the code enforcement, I guess that would be that Tuesday, uh, code enforcement, um, removed approximately fifteen hundred pounds of, uh, refuse from, from the area. And the, the, the picture. And the, the picture that's, that's attached to the slide is some of the refuse. Just kind of an example that was collected on that, the day after Memorial Day. So our, our board, your board, has adopted a, a strategic plan for our county, identified a number of priorities. One of those priorities is to improve and secure safe recreational access through public lands to, to the rivers in Yuba County. So the, the chapter that is being introduced to your board today, we, we feel, the staff feels that in partnership with Trilla could provide improved, safe recreational access to the Feather River. So I, I do want to make sure that it's, it's clear that the, the chapter that's being introduced today, it's not to prohibit public access within the Feather River setback area. It's to provide safe access within this, safe and orderly access within this area so that the public can enjoy the amenities within the setback area, including the Feather River. So. So some highlights that are within this ordinance. The, as, as I've, as I've mentioned several times now, you know, public access is granted by the ownership of the land within this setback area. The property owner, which in this case is either the Three Rivers Levy Improvement Authority or the State of California, all of the land within this, this proposed ordinance is publicly owned land that's between the Feather River Levy and the, basically the border of Yuba County, which abuts the Feather River for, for most of this, most of the length. So anyways, so the public access is really determined by that, that the public entity that is in control of that land. And this ordinance that's being introduced provides kind of a, a structure in order to provide orderly, safe access within the area. One of the highlights within this ordinance, and I have a, a follow-up slide here, is that it would, it would prohibit the use of off-road vehicles within the boundaries of this ordinance. Now, this would not prohibit licensed vehicles that, that are able to go on the road. Those, those are, those are perfectly acceptable. And the routes that would, that those licensed vehicles would be on or areas that they could enter would be determined by the State of California for their lands and Three Rivers Levy Improvement Authority for, for their lands. The other part, and this gets back to the orderliness and the ability to, to have a, a safe area, no person would remain within this area overnight. So it, it, it would be closed to the public from thirty minutes after sunset to thirty minutes before sunrise. We have the same time limitations in place for the starbend boat ramp area, which is immediately to the south of, of this area covered by this ordinance. So back on, on the enforcement side, and this is something that we, we feel will be beneficial to ensuring compliance with the ordinance. The Sheriff's Department and code enforcement through this ordinance would have the authority to remove any vehicle and/or personal property within the, the setback area that poses a health or safety hazard. And that, in addition, and this is in all of our county ordinances. Maybe I misspoke there, I'm not sure if we have any county ordinances that don't have violation as a misdemeanor. But predominantly, for example, the, the ones covered in Title Eight, violation of the ordinance. So that would be consistent with this chapter as well. And then we would have, because as I mentioned, we have agricultural uses within on Trilla lands as well as on some of the state-owned lands through leases. So we would have exceptions within the ordinance specific to agriculture. And there would be a, a AgPass type program for those that are actively farming that, that area that would be accepted from the regulations of this. All right. So on off-road vehicle use, because I know it's been an active topic because there is quite a bit of off-road vehicle use currently occurring in the Feather River setback area. I did want to point out that the intent of this setback area or the creation of the setback area is really flood control driven. As I mentioned before, we had the ninety-seven flood. The best way to protect our communities was to set back that Feather River Levy, which opened up this additional area between the levy and the Feather River. But that, it was, it was never the intent to create an active off-road recreation area. It was, it was, the intent was to enhance flood control for our communities. And so I, I did want to point out that there is purposely designated off-road areas that are nearby. For example, we have two motocross tracks that are permitted by the county Linda area plus the motocross track that operates within the city of Marysville by permit. The state has designated off-road vehicle areas in our, in our area. There's one in Butte County, just to the north, near Oroville called Clay Pits. There's, there's one in Sacramento area called Prairie City and then Mammoth Bar, which is in the Placer County area. And then in addition to state designated off-road vehicle areas, there's a whole host of federal lands within Yuba County and our neighboring counties available for off-road use. And in addition to the ones that are already designated, as the board's aware, the board, actually, earlier this year, directed staff to, to seek out a lease on BLM land within Goldfields. And the, the uses within that leased land is still for the board to determine. But there's definitely going to be opportunities in the future to look at what, what would be allowable uses within that area leased in the Goldfields by the county. All right. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions the board has.
I think at this point, we're going to open the public hearing, correct? Okay. So the public hearing is open. Any questions from the board?
Could, could I make a follow-up to Kevin before you?
You can talk to him as much as you want.
Okay. So on the Goldfields, I just wanted to update, kind of give an update because I'm, we've been working on that with Mike Lee. The county is working on leasing the BLM ground in the Goldfields. Currently, the BLM does not allow OHV in the Motherlode District. And the county changed that lease to negotiate to where we can offer OHV access on that lease as the county, once we get the lease back from the BLM. So it is our intention to try to provide an OHV area legally in that Goldfields area on the BLM. However, it's taken far longer than I ever thought it would have taken to get a lease back from the federal government. But we are currently working on providing another OHV park that currently, if that road was opened back up, it would be barricaded off to walk-in traffic only, inconsistent with the current laws of the BLM and the Motherlode District. So that was my update.
Through the chair, I have a question for staff, kind of followed up on that a little bit. So i- if the board moves forward with this ordinance, it doesn't preclude the board in the future from identifying if one exists a suitable location in this area for off-road activities that could be essentially controlled and restricted and maintained maybe by a private entity that wanted to do a lease with us or something like that. Again, not saying that that's going to happen, but just saying there's nothing that precludes us from looking into that in the future, if we, if, if there's an opportunity there to do that.
Yes. And, and thank you for the question Supervisor Bradford. So, so staff has structured the proposed ordinance to have an, there's an exceptions section within the ordinance and anticipating that there may be a use in the future that isn't identified in the ordinance currently. And it, and it provides the board the ability to add that in the future. So the example of, for example, if, if the Three Rivers Levy Improvement Authority or the State of California entered into an agreement with a group to operate an off-road area, you know, a designated off-road area within part of their lands, that we, we could adjust the ordinance through the exceptions section to accept out that particular area to organize off-road area that was authorized by either Trilla or the state.
Great, thank you. Building off of that, I agree with the problem that's identified. I like most of the solution. My concern is, of course, a total ban on off-road. Having the group that I've already identified, the five three O Off-Road Recovery, if we could amend this to include that exact agreement that they will be in charge of supervising and maintaining an off-road area as part of this right now, I think that would alleviate a lot of concerns.
That, that would be at the discretion of the property owners. Back to the State of California or the Three Rivers Levy Improvement Authority to enter into an agreement with a group for a specific area under a specific permit.
So I just have a comment. Thinking back, what we're, our goal was to try to take advantage of all these really wonderful natural, natural assets that we have in the county and provide a safe place for families to go, you know, not being run over by people that shouldn't be there. So I think that was our whole goal on trying to better control these and maybe expand the use of these assets that we have. So I'm, we've always been all for doing that. More comments from the board? So any public comments at this point, since, since it's an open, open hearing?
Through the chair, we have four request to speak cards.
Okay.
The first is Dustin Dondevere.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Dustin Dondevere, and I'm the president of a local nonprofit organization known as Five Three O Recovery and Everything Off-Road. Our organization represents over nine thousand members across the Five Three O region, advocating for responsible off-road recreational and environmental stewardship. Today, I want to address the recent closure of OHV areas such as Shattpad, Yuba Goldfields, and Grace Beach, even though I heard what was proposed on how we're gonna make this work. These closures has significantly impacted our community, limiting access to vital recreational spaces. While we understand concerns about safety, it's important to clarify that these issues primarily stem from homeless populations and car show activities, not from the responsible off-road enthusiasts. Our organization has been proactive in maintaining and cleaning these areas. For instance, we have organized massive cleanups and removed over two hundred abandoned burnt vehicles covering from the Feather River Banks, as far as we can get down to, in the hard-to-reach areas that others cannot pull these vehicles up from. We also cleaned up tons of garbage, going back since two thousand sixteen is when we originated here in Yuba County, with all three areas open, Shattpad, Yuba Goldfields, and Grace Beach. Despite of our efforts, the, these continue to threaten our access to these cherished places. I grew up in this area, and this is as a community core, is what we know to have off-roading in Yuba County. Since the Shattpad and the Goldfields has been closed down, it has caused Grace Beach to be overcrowded, which caused all the chaos. And nobody enjoys going down there because there's too many people. When all three places were open, there was more people to fan out and go to to enjoy these places. We understand the whole walk-in situation to make it safer, but what about us that want to drive to the river and park right there and enjoy the summer? It is crucial that we work together to find a balanced solution that addresses safety concerns without unfairly penalizing law-abiding recreational users. We are committed to collaborating with local authorities and stakeholders to ensure that these lands remain accessible and safe for everyone. We are open to looking at grants for OHV parks that could possibly fund a piece of Yuba County land for off-road recreation that our organization is willing to operate and control. I do have some more questions. I would ask if you guys are willing to sit with the conference after this meeting to go over. And I want to thank you for your time, and I look forward to a productive discussion on how we can preserve our outdoor heritage while addressing community concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Smith Barker.
I'm Michelle Smith Barker with, living in Yuba County. Just wanted to comment on that Yuba County Feather River setback area. We have ranches in that area on the north end of our area of discussion from the Grace Beach. The Feather River setback areas do end at Myrna Avenue. Starting from there, I believe it's both the sewer pond areas, Linda Water District and the Yuba City Water District. And then we are to the north of that, two large ranches. All of the riders that are riding never end at Myrna Avenue, which is on the map that's attached to the setback area. It never ends there, and they trespass through private farmlands all the way to the motorcycle tracks. We are all aware that the largest population of these off-roaders aren't even citizens of the Yuba Seder counties. A few bad have ruined it for all. The destruction of our levies, which are well-marked, are ignored by these riders. Trespass signs have been in place many times, only to be torn down. We've now all moved up in our area to placing twenty-foot K rails that weigh eighty-five hundred pounds to use that to mark them as no trespassing because those can't be removed. The Five Three O Club has endlessly participated in cleaning up in the area, but so has Yuba County Public Works at a cost to all the taxpayers. It's just not about the trash and the cleanup. It's a continued trespassing through private properties such as my own. We block off areas of continued trespassing with trees that we pulled out. Riders then come with chainsaws and cut up the trees to make their areas to trespass again. You know, a good example is, I believe, the Goldfields, which I just learned that BLM land was a hundred and ten acres. That was a public area, but they were riding six thousand acres, trespassing on several private property owners. This is what's happened right here from the Grace Beach all the way up to the motorcycle track. The liability of these riders on our private properties is horrendous as a landowner. I probably about fifteen years ago had to participate in a lawsuit of a trespasser who had just ridden by a no trespassing sign on my property, crashed on a blind corner, and was airlifted out. We spent three years taking care of that issue, hoping that all the boundaried areas that will be allowed in the Feather River setback area will be well-boundaried with K rails and restrooms placed in these areas also. I also believe there should be a entry fee, type fee, to these areas. And I'm thinking that some type of an air, a fee that is justified if you're a Yuba Seder County resident is lower. If you're coming from out of town, you pay a higher fee because we don't need to promote out-of-towners to coming into our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Good comments.
Raj Sharma.
Thank you, board, for giving me the opportunity to speak. Raj Sharma, I farm over three thousand acres from the area. And I've farmed from thirty years in the bed. I'm leasing the land from the state. I had raised thousands and thousands, tons of peaches out of that place. And now that land is planted in two English ponets. And like you already hear from Ed Conant, and you are working already from the county stand trying to help the wallet. We are losing money already. And before we had built a setback levy, we enjoyed the farming there, everything was fine and wonderful. And right after they built the setback levies, that Anderson Road, which was my main road to enter the orchard, had been abandoned. And now is there nothing, it's just off-road vehicles goes, spin wheels, big Jeeps. We bring the wallets in the high-top trailers. Last year, I almost had three trailers tipped over. And every year, two times, three times, they go steal my pumps out of the river. That's okay, you can buy another pump, which I've been doing. And a few years back, one of my employees, he was working in these off-road vehicles, he was eating. They went flying right by and his, his food was all spoiled. He tried to stop. He got a shot in his skull, we had to take him to ride truck, he almost died. And now at this point, I have no employee who want to go and work in that area. Because when they go work, they're on the tractor mowing, they go to other end of the field. When they come, their car are trash, broken windows, stole all their belongings. I don't have, I had over a hundred employees, not one employee want to work there. I send them to work, they went home. And recently, here's the picture. They had a curstad transformer right next to my pump. They had a Kurt Star transformer right next to my pump and took the wires and there is a live wire all over on the road. Somebody gonna get electrocuted. And I had a, working with the state, and I had a request, Mr. Bradford was there last meeting, we need to do something. At this point, you know, I'm at the point, we're gonna file action in the Superior Court for covenant of non-enjoyment because I was asked to farm there, but now I can't farm. The orchard is abandoned. I don't have no water, no electricity. It's not gonna, I don't know how many months it gonna be before they're gonna restore their life. And I'm a, our business. And I just can't take anymore. So I'm abandoning the wood, which has raised thousands and thousands, tons of peaches and walnuts, which we are trying to promote. What are we gonna promote if we can't even grow? I think it's very shameful. If we really want off-road vehicles, they gotta be designated place where, has to monitor. I don't care, but they should leave my property. I pay processary tax to Yuba County every year. What are those taxes for? I think I should reclaim all their money where I can even make a penny out of it. Every year, I'm losing 60, 70. Not at that. It's a safety. Employee, I have to, if, if that guy had died, I will lose my entire livelihood. You know, then the last group comes, who's gonna be responsible? County, state, five, 30 off-road, who? I need to know who's gonna be liable for it. If that's okay, that's fine. But I want to release my liability and take the liability gift to the people who like to enjoy this off-road thing. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Greg Bach.
Hey, good morning supervisors. Thank you. I'm Greg Bach. We're at East Street MX. I'm just here to kind of follow up what Kevin said. I've been working with Kevin in the county, done a great job. We picked up some of that property that was on the other side of the 70 Bridge and we spent probably $100,000 cleaning it up. So the problem was, I think Kevin brought it up, was garbage, stolen vehicles. There was a meth lab. There was chop shops, legitimate chop shops. Do you guys chopping up cars? The problem is now is we've got control with the help of the county and the sheriff's department. We're still having an issue with access and it seemed to be coming from down river. And I'm kind of here to support my neighbors and private property and trespassing. The Five Three O Recovery Group, fantastic group. They actually came out and helped us. They're a great organization. They do a lot for the community. I'm a huge fan of theirs. What we've discovered is we're getting people from out of town, mostly Stockton, and they're coming out here with, you know, weapons and like the last gentleman was talking about, they're coming out here, high-performance vehicles, just speeding through these farm stuff and they're doing incredible damage. They're leaving their garbage, tons of garbage that we have to pick up and remove. And it's not the locals and it's not, you know, Five Three O guys. It's these people coming from out of there to take advantage. I think that's what happened out there in the Goldfields. The Goldfields was a great place to go. And then these guys came from out of town. That's what our concern is. We don't want to see restriction to access to the beaches, the rivers. We want to see health and safety. I mean, that's, you know, we are still pulling out homeless. We're still pulling out stolen vehicles and we have issues all the time out there where we're doing our own patrolling just to keep the place safe for our riders. We have, we have a national race series. We're bringing in a lot of money, a lot of people from all over the state and all over the west coast for these race series. And, you know, we have to patrol and do our own patrolling just to keep, for health and safety. So again, I'm not here to, you know, I just really want to focus on like the neighbors who are property owners and the farmers where we catch these guys doing all kinds of stuff out in these farms. And we just want to like, like Kevin said, you know, health and safety and protect property ownership. Thank you.
No further comments.
Okay. I probably missed my turn, but I have a comment. Years ago, we used to be on farming and it would be very unusual to see a gated orchard. Now practically every orchard seems to be gated and that has been a trend for a long, long time that everybody's trying to protect their property. So I think we're on the right path here. Okay. So we've had public comment. We've had board comment. I think, Kevin, you have anything else you want to say?
Yeah, just as far as the process. So, so my recommendation would be to close the public hearing and for the board to introduce the ordinance at this meeting and that we would come back at the next board meeting, which would be July 9th, to have the board consider adoption of the ordinance. And if the board adopted the ordinance, it takes 30 days to go into effect, which would be hopefully August, what, 8th, 9th. And, and then it would be in effect. And so if, under that, that scenario, that would give adequate time to make sure that the public is properly noticed of, of, of what's going to go into effect with the ordinance.
Okay. So we're going to official, was there another comment down there?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion with an amendment, but however you'd like.
Well, we first have to officially close the hearing.
I would like to make one other comment. Nobody's brought up the damage to the new levy is being caused by these side-by-sides and things. I don't know how many millions the county spent, trillion spent building that levy, but it protects a lot of you guys down in the South End. And my brother lived at the end of Country Club Road in 1997. And I don't think anybody ever wants to go through a flood like that ever again. His entire house went underwater. So.
So, hearing being closed, we need a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So I do have another comment before entertain a motion chair, if that's all right. So I, I wanted to thank Five Three O Recovery for coming today. I also wanted to say I really appreciate what you guys do for the river areas in this community. I know you do a ton, both for helping keep them clean as well as helping folks that get stuck down there. I appreciate your collaborative attitude. I appreciate your, your great attitude today and your presentation and what you had to say. I think, I think your concerns about access are very important and very valid. I also think we have some pretty immediate issues that have to be addressed in that area with respect to safety and with respect to property damage and costs to taxpayers and other things for cleanup. And so, you know, I'm very supportive of, of taking these immediate actions that are proposed. And I'm also very supportive of Trilla working to see if there are opportunities for a designated area that, that could be implemented and maintained. I've heard interest from, from the Five Three O folks to, to explore that and maybe be the ones that are responsible for that. And I'm very interested in, in seeing that discussion move forward and hopefully be fruitful. I, I am concerned about putting off this while those discussions happen. I think it's important that this happened first and then those discussions happen just because I do believe this is an immediate issue that needs addressing. So anyway, my thoughts.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
As well, to follow up on that. Also, the Five Three O Recovery went up and for the National Forest and got stolen cars out in Yuba County. So it's not just the rivers are cleaning up. It's all Yuba County. They are a great group. And Dustin, you said something about staying after and having a meeting. We have a closed session after this. I don't know how long it'll last. If anybody can predict that, I'd be happy to come back out if you guys want to stay around and, and meet with you after our meeting. Maybe Kerry could also stay. We can't have more than two supervisors. Do you have any prediction on how long? And if not, we can, I can at least come back out here and we can set up another meeting with the group.
Through, through the chair.
Yes.
I, I would suggest potentially that the chair maybe establish an ad hoc committee. I'm very willing to be on that. It sounds like Supervisor Messick is interested where we can have those discussions. Unfortunately, I do have another meeting at, at 1:30 today. I don't know how long closed session will go. So I'm, I'm a little worried about the ability to have that meeting right after, but I'm, I'm very willing to participate in those discussions. And I think having the sheriff there is important. Having the county administrator there, having Five Three O there, Trilla representation, it sounds like would be important as well.
Yeah, we are definitely drifting, drifting towards a more formalized meeting. So, one thing at a time. Would you like us to introduce the ordinance or accept the ordinance?
So the, the, the item before you today is to hold the public hearing, which the board has done, waive the first reading and introduce ordinance creating chapter 8.110 of the Yuba County Ordinance Code related to the Yuba County Feather River Levy setback area. But that's, that's.
Okay. So we need a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So I, I would like to make a motion with the amendment that Trilla be directed to come to an agreement with Five Three O Off-Road Recovery to manage that off-road area.
Okay. Things are getting kind of muddy here.
If, if I could through the chair and maybe council can weigh in on this. I don't, I don't believe the county board can direct the Trilla board on their action.
The guy's the same guy.
The, the county board can encourage, recommend, but I don't believe.
In that case, I will move to table this until after Trilla has come to an agreement with Five Three O Off-Road Recovery for management of said area.
All right. Did we get a motion? And a second? Do we want a second?
If, if, if there's no second, then it.
Well, that wasn't the motion. Seth made a different motion.
Right.
He made a motion that we table it.
Oh, well, I thought we had a motion to.
No, he amended that motion and he made a motion that we table this.
All right. So we don't have a second on Seth's motion.
Okay.
Now, if we're gonna back up to what we were originally intended, do we have a motion to extend this ordinance or accept this ordinance?
So I, I will move to, not accept, what is, what is the word?
Introduce.
To introduce the ordinance and, and I, I, with direction to staff that we would like to engage in conversation with, with Five Three O Life, Five Three O Life, with Five Three O Recovery about potential off-road use in a, in a designated area managed by them or someone else in the future. Is that acceptable, counsel? If not, I'll, I can strike the last part and just give staff direction to do that.
It seems like we want to get through the basics here and then create our ad hoc committee and have some thorough discussions on what we're gonna do to make it better.
If I could suggest that we go through what is on the agenda for today and then suggest that the next agenda available have an item on it to form the ad hoc committee, if that's what the board wants to do, but that should be agendized.
Okay. I, I will move to introduce the ordinance.
Oh, second.
Okay.
I'm assuming that is staff's recommended action to waive the first reading, introduce the ordinance, everything that staff has recommended.
Yes, that is my motion.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. It's gonna be a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez is absent. Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhrer.
Reasonably so. And so my vote's gonna be no, but I do want to explain that I'm only wanting to table the matters why it's no. Sharma, Mr. Sharma, your, your testimony there was fantastic and it was very moving and I completely agree with you and as well as the other rancher. The issue is that when we ban things at the county level, criminals are already not allowed on your property and that already is an ongoing thing. What we're only doing is stopping law-abiding people from being down there because the criminals are gonna criminal.
So that was a no.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. I'm out of breath. So at some point, what would be the proper procedure to form our ad hoc committee to get on this as soon as we can?
I would recommend staff direction to place the matter on the agenda for forming the ad hoc committee.
We can do it prior to the next meeting, right?
Point of clarification, counsel, we can form an ad hoc committee immediately, can't we? We don't need to wait for it to be agendized.
I'm gonna need a minute to look that up. If you want an answer on this, I'm gonna need a five-minute recess to look this up. I'm sorry. I'm not familiar with your past practice. You do have rules and procedures and so I would want to read those and make sure I know what it is.
Don, why don't you appoint the ad hoc committee and then when we, if we did it wrong, we'll retract it later.
We're gonna pass on that. We're gonna, I think we all want to form this as fast as possible, hopefully today. And our council will tell us how we can do that.
Can we do a five-minute recess maybe before the board and staff member reports?
Well, well, we still have a number of these.
Or you want to do it now? I don't know. Whatever you want to do.
No, we're gonna, I think.
I do five minutes now.
Okay. We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Most of your audience is here for that particular item.
Yubasutter Lives Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslake selfstorage.com. You are listening to a ninety-four-three KXYS broadcast of the Yuba City Symphony's Patriotic Music Concert.
One minute.
She's on a call with somebody, dispo a friend.
Lifeline.
Lifeline.
So as far as what's coming up, we still have about five, uh, public hearings coming up and then some staff reports and then we'll be doing a closed session. And that will hopefully wrap us up. Hmm, we're shooting for noon, we'll see how it goes. Uh, county council will be out here in just a second.
So are we proceeding and you want to call three seventy-seven or are we not proceeding?
Sure wants one minute. I hear her coming. Okay, recess is over. And I think we have an opinion from council on an ad hoc committee.
I have concluded my research and I believe that because the interest in forming the ad hoc committee arises as a result of an item that was on your agenda today, I believe that you can go ahead today and form your ad hoc committee. Or you could wait until next time and put it on the agenda, I think the choice is yours.
No, I think, I think the feeling is we want to do this right away, so can I just appoint two people and we're done?
I think that you, it'd be appropriate for anyone who wants to be on it to express interest, maybe you could have a quick discussion about it.
Yeah, I think we've had that. Um, I think Supervisor Bradford and Supervisor Messick would like to head up the ad hoc committee.
Absolutely, and both the places in question are in our districts.
Right. Okay, we can.
I would form it with a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to do the ad hoc committee and start immediately.
I'll make a motion, we form an ad hoc committee, um, to work with the five through off-road recovery and citizens of the county about the OHV areas in, in Yuba County and recommend that you appoint myself and Supervisor Bradford to that ad hoc committee.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, everybody in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, nobody's opposed, we're moving on. We're going to number three seventy-seven, County Community Development and Services Ordinance.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow board. We with community developments. And today we have, um, three development agreements that we are going to be presenting to your board and for simplicity, I, I, we drew them up on one, uh, map so that you can see the location of them. That's down here on the keyboard. Um, anyway, sorry, apologize for that. So if you look on the, the, the map on your screen there, there are, uh, three different locations shown, those are the three that we're going to be discussing today. The first item though is, uh, Bear River Ranch. That's the one, uh, in yellow on, on the map. Uh, development agreements are authorized by Government Code Section six-five-eight-six-four and Yuba County Ordinance Code Chapter eleven point six-six. They are essentially a negotiated contract between a developer and the county. They're not required, but they provide benefits and certainty to both parties. Developer gains certainty in terms of its development requirements and a given timeframe to develop while the county gains public improvements, other benefits we wouldn't otherwise realize with the developer. The Bear River Ranch project, uh, consists of five hundred and fifty acres, uh, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three proposed lots, of which nineteen hundred and twenty-eight are for single-family residential. The project was originally approved by the Board of Supervisors in two thousand and eight and included an amendment to the Plumus Lake specific plan at that time. Uh, project was originally set to expire in two thousand and eleven, but, um, there were, have been many state mandated extensions that have pushed that expiration to two thousand and twenty-seven. Here is, uh, another figure or map showing the Bear River Ranch project in, uh, more close up. Some of the key points that I would like to draw your attention to in, in the, uh, development agreement, the duration is proposed as fifteen years from the project's current expiration date. Um, as, as a condition, uh, or agreement of the DA, we are requiring a, them to construct a bike path along the entire western boundary of the project, uh, as, as shown in the, in the yellow on the figure. This, uh, bike path will be adjacent to the Reclamation District seven and eighty-four facilities, uh, the, the ground for the bike path will be dedicated in fee to the county and, uh, we will provide seven eighty-four in easement to access and maintain their facilities. Developer also as part of that bike path is, will have three, um, tie-ins, I guess, three points in the, uh, development that will allow access to, to the, uh, to and from the bike path. Um, and another requirement we put in the development agreement is, uh, the developer agrees to essentially front-load or front, yeah, front-load their, their traffic impact fees for the GLSP NASA Traffic Impact Fee Program. Um, those typically are required on each individual lot before, uh, final occupancy permits are issued. So however, as part of this agreement, they are agreeing to pay fifty percent of the traffic impact fees on ma-, uh, map recordation, so as each pays, uh, finals or we record the map, they will be paying fifty percent of the traffic impact fees on those lots. The other fifty percent will be, will be at the normal time before certificate of occupancy. And lastly, the developer is paying an in-lu fee of fifty thousand dollars to the, to the planning department. There are a the, um, a, a set of findings that, that need to be made in order to enter into a development agreement. These are listed on the slide in front of you, I, uh, in conference with, with county council staff, I determined that I don't need to read them all, but when, perhaps you could reference them in, in your closed, uh, adoption if, if you go, uh, go seek fit. And so that is for the current item, uh, that is my presentation. Happy to answer questions on this.
Okay, so you're done with the presentation, we're going to open public hearing and any questions from the board on this?
I have a question, Mike. Will that bike path continue and tie in with all the future developments and go all the way through?
Plan, yep, we have a network down there that we're going to systematically try to build so that you'll, you'll have continuity really from the, from the north, very south end all the way.
In, in, through the chair, speaking of bike paths. In, in, through the chair, speaking of bike paths on the eastern side of that development, it's not necessarily this developer's responsibility, but there is a planned bike path there as well. In fact, that's actually what the county recently started, correct?
On bullet C, when it says provided needed infrastructure, what sorts of things constitute infrastructure? So we have fire, we have police, and then we have schools. We have a constant seems problem with schools not having sufficient funding to provide the services necessary from these developments. What are the other infrastructures, water, sewer, et cetera, that go into it? There are any of the other infrastructures likewise insufficiently funded, or is it just schools that continue to have that problem?
Well, infrastructure finding, finding, as you know, is always a challenge. The schools, I think, are set, they have a maximum amount that they're allowed to charge, right? And so that often ends up being inadequate. Most of the, with our developments, the transportation infrastructure, you know, the roads and the sewer water, all that, the developers required to build that with the, the project. So there should be adequate infrastructure for that development. Obviously, there is major infrastructure, like interchanges that need, that are needed to access those individual subdivisions. And that's why we have the, the PLSP, Plumas Lake Specific Plan, North of Bogus Study Area, Traffic Impact Fee Program. And that's to fund those larger projects that are needed to support the development in the area.
So when we do the traffic costs that it's going to be because of the increased use of our roads, so when people drive from Plumas Lake up to Marysville to purchase something, the extra costs that we have that we need to use to build a Goldfields Parkway, is there an incremental part of every one of their impact fees that's going towards that fund because of the necessity to increase traffic mobility in the county and in the whole?
There, there, yes, this is, there's multiple fee, fee programs in the county. So the, the one I recently, just recently discussed was the Plumas Lake specific plan, meant for the major infrastructure in that plan area. We also have the countywide development impact fee, which has various components. One of the most significant one is the transportation component. And there are, and anybody can look it up, it's online, but there's a list of projects that are needed in the county and that, that funding that will be utilized for.
Okay.
Goldfields Parkway is one of those projects.
Perfect. So they have, there's a list of projects that we have for the county as a whole, and every single one of these lots is getting hit with a penny to a dollar, whatever it is, towards each of those projects because of the county's whole infrastructure needs.
Correct. Those two fee programs, as well as they'll also be paying the Cetia fee program. So they're going to be contributing to three different fee programs for transportation.
All right. And then, like I said, besides schools, is there anything else in the general umbrella of infrastructure that seems to constantly be a problem? Whether it's the fact that, like, parks get, it seems like built at the last phase, and then the construction seems to peter out before the parks get built, and so then we end up with not having the parks built, or what are some other issues that happen?
Yeah, I mean, parks typically, the, the, it depends. Some, some builders like to build them upfront as a selling amenity to their, their future homeowners. Like, for example, the, in Goldfields Ranch in East Linda, LGI Homes is, is going to be front building that park. They're not necessarily always required to, but some, some choose to do that. And most of the parks in Uba County are opod parks. So they, you know, are the main ones to figure out the timing and get built. Sometimes they'll collect the impact fees and build them themselves, and, but most of the time, they'll have the developer build the park and then dedicate it to them. Exact timing of that is subject to their discretion and stuff. As far as, you know, all infrastructure's challenging, as you know, levy infrastructure here was a huge issue, required a lot of money and a lot of advanced funding. Transportation often needs advanced funding for the necessary infrastructure, and that's one of the reasons we put this proposed condition in these development agreements is to help front-load that so we can get some of these major infrastructure projects built sooner rather than later.
Just following up pretty much on some things that Seth said. My big concern is, like he said, schools. There's a limit as to what they can assess, and how does that change? Or can it change?
It's, it's a state law, I believe.
Probably.
And, but they do, again, sometimes the schools, this is kind of outside my bailiwick, but the schools can negotiate with the developers to, if you call it a side agreement, where they, where the developer or landowner agrees to pay, pay a higher per square foot cost. I don't know that they are necessarily required to do that, but they, a lot of times they end up doing that because it gets to keep the school from challenging or fighting the project. They, they kind of have a side agreement to pay.
Well, if you look back, if you just add up relatively recent developments in the last ten, fifteen years, what's the population of Wheatland? Four thousand?
Just under.
Yeah. So what we have on the books is building a town twice as big as Wheatland when you add up all these subdivisions that we're doing. And it's a concern that, you know, we're staying ahead of where we can support those houses and people. And primarily the schools is the big concern.
So through, through the chair, just to follow up on comments from both Supervisor Blazer and Supervisor Fur, as I hear similar comments from my constituents, and it, and it appears to me, just like you said, Mike, that there's infrastructure that's directly needed as a result of a subdivision. And typically, the developers are required to put that in as part of the subdivision or, or pay appropriate impact fees that typically cover a hundred percent of the cost. And we talk about parks, water, wastewater, roads immediately adjacent to and in the subdivision. And then there's larger infrastructure projects like have been mentioned, like interchanges or, you know, schools, and that they pay towards those as well, as you've brought up. I know recently there was a Supreme Court decision which reaffirmed that, you know, impact fees cannot be more than that individual house's essentially impact, right? And so you have larger transportation projects like an interchange that, you know, for example, the Plumas Lake Boulevard Interchange will be used by many people who, you know, didn't, didn't buy a home in Plumas Lake. And so really only the portion of the project that's directly attributable to the Plumas Lake residents, those houses pay that share, and then we rely on state and federal transportation funding to make up the difference. And, and there's a similar thing that happens with respect to schools where houses pay a component of that. It's mandated, the state limits that. And then you, as you mentioned, developers can, or the districts can negotiate with developers to pay a higher rate. I know some of the newest developments in Plumas Lake, the Plumas Elementary District has negotiated two to three times the state minimum for those developers to pay. Still, it's not, it's not enough to build those schools. They're quite expensive, so.
So we're in the board comment mode. Anybody else? Any public comment on this open session? I think we have one.
Hello, my, my name is Sean Menard with M H M Engineering. I represent all three projects and, you know, the discussion about school fees. We've done a lot of performas on these projects, in particular, the Draper Ranch, which actually is currently developing slowly, but it is developing. Plumas, or the Draper Ranch project has a, as you call it, a voluntary agreement with the school district to pay higher fee than the state, state mandated max, which is currently five dollars and seventeen cents. The other one, Plumas Lake subdivision, it has a, an agreement also, and it's like Supervisor Bradford mentioned, it's like, it's like three times higher. It's almost, almost thirty thousand dollars a house, regardless of the square footage of the house. It's, it's actually, one of the reason we're asking for a DA, because it's making it hard to develop the property. So it's so overburdened by some of the fees. So that's one reason these three projects are before you is because we haven't been able to develop them because of these, all these, all the fees. So hopefully the additional fifteen years will get us to that point where we can move forward and get them developed. So do you have any other questions regarding all the infrastructure of any of these projects? But they all have the school fee agreements, they, and then some of them have, they have to pay this seven eighty-four fees and everything else, just like all the other projects. So do you have any questions I could try to answer?
Yeah, I don't know how to reduce the fees. I don't know how to reduce the fees if you're going to support the housing.
No, I'm not asking, just saying that, that these projects have, where they're located, they just have higher fees, and that's why one reason or.
Well, at least the schools are fairly aggressive on trying to raise enough to build a school.
Very aggressive, yeah. And then on top of that, a lot of these projects, once they do a school bond, they have to pay the school bond plus the high fees. So they're hit twice, maybe three times if there are multiple school bonds.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other public comment? If not, we will close the open session. Open hearing. And ask for a motion.
Sure. So I'll, I'll make one more comment, and then I will make a motion. I just want to thank staff for their work on, you know, getting, getting the bike path negotiated and also getting the transportation impact fees, a portion of those fronted to help with transportation improvements. I, I think that's great. It's a huge benefit to the community. And so with that, I will move to approve the findings and the DA.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
And this is a roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez is absent. Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Two seventy-nine? I think it's the next one? Or did we just do that one?
Uh, I don't have the number. It's Draper Ranch North.
Oh, yeah, three seventy-nine.
Three seventy-nine.
Right.
Draper Ranch North project is the one in green shown on the slide in front of you. And I will, this is a blow-up version of the project. The project consists of a hundred and sixty acres, consisting of five hundred and eighty-three single-family residences. It was originally approved by the Planning Commission in two thousand and four. In two thousand and nine, a DA was approved for this project due to its contribution toward levy improvement financing, extending the project expiration to two thousand and twenty-four. The owner is now seeking an additional DA to further extend the project expiration. As Sean just mentioned, the, the build-out rate has, has been slow, and there's a significant amount of the project that is not yet built. And so to extend the life of the project, the DA, this DA is in front of you today. The key points in the DA are essentially the identical to the prior discussion. Fifteen-year duration, the bike path will be constructed along the entire west side of the project, with the ground coming to the county in fee, and a drainage easement or an access easement will be provided to seven eighty-four to maintain their adjacent canal. There'll be three tie-ins to the residential project to the bike path. Developer agrees to front-load the traffic impact fees at a rate of fifty percent as each map records, and with the remainder being paid at the building occupancy. And then lastly, the, again, the fifty thousand dollar in-loofe to the Pla- Planning Department. And with that, I can open, open.
That being said, okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Any comments from the board?
Um, just a question. The middle area there that's a little bit more, doesn't have as much busy stuff going on, is that for commercial development, or what is that area?
That is a park site.
All of the open ish, so there's the one in the direct to the left that is the park site. What about the ones that are less congested without the little dots in the middle of the squares?
Those, I believe, are the already built-on lots.
Okay, so there is no commercial spaces left in that?
In this particular project, there was no commercial approved.
Okay. And then just a more general question, not necessarily specific to this. We seem to have a problem down in Plumas Lake of not having, it seems like, a lot of commercial. When we do development planning, do they put aside places for churches and for those types of stuff? Because if it's just all houses, it seems like.
Yeah, no, I mean, there, there, yes, everything is, especially in a specific plan, everything is, is designed out and zoned out. There are certain areas for commercials, typically like around Plumas Lake Boulevard Interchange is going to be the primary one. And that, I know people have been waiting, it seems like an eternity for that project to, to take off, but we have caught recent wind that it looks like it's at, at the, at the finish line. So hopefully we'll see some, some dirt moving in, in, in the next six months or so, and with the, you know, getting that under construction. So that, that whole footprint around the interchange there is all slated for properties.
So, so as an example, in Plumas Lake currently, there's a church meeting, but they have to meet in a school. There isn't like a lot that's set aside for those sorts of community activities. There, there's just, it's all residential, just wall-to-wall, it seems like, for large areas. That's the normal footprint of how we do things now. Because when you have an organically grown community, obviously there's lots of stuff going on, and you have a church on every street corner or a bar every couple blocks or whatever it is.
I think a church site actually was proposed on, on, at one time. I know Bayside was looking at putting a church on that, that property I just talked about.
So it'd be in the commercial zone with everything else?
Yes. I think the, I'm not the expert on zoning, but I think churches can be in other zone districts as well. But I, I know one was originally proposed. I don't think it's moving forward.
Right. I guess I'm just curious, the, the feel of a community where it is more interspersed as opposed to only residential is, is a different feel, and, and we don't seem to have that in the newer developments.
I, I hear what you're saying, and, and, and I know Supervisor Bradford has made similar comments in the past, and we are, we are anticipating moving forward with a, I guess, updating of the Plumas Lake specific plan over the next year or two, just to, to have some public comment and ta-talk about some of these concerns and, and look at potentially, you know, rezoning or, or making sure that the plan still is appropriate for, because it is a twenty, thirty, twenty-five-year-old plan. So making sure it's appropriate for current time.
Yeah, through, through the chair, just to, to add to that and, and kind of address your very valid concerns about how development has happened in the past in Plumas Lake. I, I share those same concerns, and I think, you know, when the plan was approved in the nineties, this is kind of how development was being done. I, I believe that's changed substantially, and I'm really looking forward to being able to potentially have a conversation with the community. And to, for areas that have not yet been developed, which there are quite a few, revisit how that can happen in the future to have a more intermixed commercial, more walkability, more diversity of housing types for all income and life stages. And so I really look forward to, to just really trying to work, get the community input and provide opportunity for just a higher quality of life as the community continues to build out. And so it's, it's definitely a big passion of mine to, to be able to do that, so.
I have a follow-up question for the chair on that. So Mike, we approved these, the developers would be able to come back and say, hey, we do want to put a community commercial center in there and maybe have some more zero lot lines so they can maintain the same amount of lots and have more walkability, and they could come back and change that, couldn't they?
Yeah, I mean, it would require certain processes.
Yeah, I mean, come back to the board and everything else.
If you're, if you're rezoning stuff in a specific plan, I think it might require a specific plan amendment.
Yeah, a lot of things have changed nowadays, especially there's a lot of emphasis on quality of life and mobility and walkability, and so things are a lot different than they were twenty years ago. So I think it's going maybe in the right direction. Any more board comments? Okay, we're in the open hearing. So any public comments? One?
Thank you, board. I just wanted to ask, is there any plan for L Avenue for an upgrade there? I've noticed they've brought housing to both sides of L Avenue, but there hasn't been any improvement.
Uh, yes, through your board, the, they're, but this, this project is required to upgrade L Avenue in, in the limits of their project, as well as Boger Road, that the northern piece is built, but the southern piece, south of L, is not fully developed, the ultimate width. And so this project is required within their conditions of approval to fully improve those two roads. And there, I think there, I don't know off the top of my head, but there was a phasing plan that we had approved at one point in time that says when each piece of the road will be built based on which phase of the project they're building.
Okay, that's it.
Sorry, did that comment or provide his name for us?
Sorry, did that comment or provide his name for us?
I'm Renek House. Uh, I lived out in our Bogota my whole life and my parents still live out there, but I'm a district to elect. So, thank you.
Okay, I think we're done with comments. Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the findings and the DA for the, um, Draper Ranch North project.
And a.
No, a second.
And a roll call vote?
Supervisor Vasquez is absent. Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, I think you're still up.
Yes, we have the third project on Plumas Lake Dana. Uh, it's, uh, highlighted in red on your exhibit in front of you. This is a blow up version of the project. The project is a, is a remnant of the overall Plumas Lake Cobblestone subdivision that was approved for, to subdivide five hundred and forty-five acres into eighteen hundred and twenty-six single family residences. It was originally approved by the planning commission in two thousand and two. Most of the cobblestone project has been developed, um, and this area is essentially the only portion that hasn't. We're, uh, we're called it Plumas Lake units nine to sixteen and it can, which consists of six hundred and eleven lots on a hundred and twenty acres. I'll quickly run through the same, you know, the points, the key points are the same, but I'll run through them again. The, the duration of the DA is fifteen years from the project's current expiration date. Uh, developer is, shall construct a bike path as shown in yellow around most of the perimeter of the whole project with the land being dedicated to the county. The county providing seven eighty-four necessary easement rights to access and maintain their facilities. There will be four bike path tie-ins to that, that path from various areas in the subdivision. The developer has agreed to front load the PLSP NASA traffic impact fees to the tune of fifty percent with each, uh, map that's recorded with the, uh, remaining fifty percent paid at building occupancy and the developer, uh, group shall pay an in-lufy of fifty thousand dollars to Yuba County Planning Department. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any board comments, questions? Seeing not any public comments, no. So do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve the findings and the development agreement for the Plumas Lake, uh, Dana project.
Could you close the public hearing quickly?
Go on.
Yes.
Did we? Or we didn't?
I didn't hear you close the public hearing.
Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing and then we'll take a motion.
Awesome. One second, Gary's motion.
And we need a roll call vote?
Supervisor Vasquez is absent. Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, three thirty-eight.
Morning Chair Board Members, Craig Herbert, Public Works. So, uh, Glad Hill Landscape and Lighting District, this is the third step of three-step process. Uh, we brought to the board a resolution on April ninth to approve engineer's report and declare intention to collect levy assessments. Uh, the board held a public hearing and the board adopted resolution on May fourteenth to conform diagram and assessments for Glad Hill. Today, we are requesting the board hold a public hearing and adopt the proposed budget. Uh, there has been no changes in the assessment rates from last year. Uh, these funds are used to maintain landscaping, repair recreational equipment, improve existing irrigation, install new irrigation and landscaping and other required work of the district. So Public Works recommend, recommends the board hold the public hearing and adopt the attached fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. If you have to answer any questions.
No, we'll open the public hearing. Any board question? Seeing none, any public comments? No, so we will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez is absent. Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three thirty-nine, is that you also?
That's me also. Craig Herbert, Public Works. So Linda Street and Lighting District, this is a two-step process. So this is the second step in the, in the two-step process. Uh, the board held a public hearing and adopted a resolution on May fourteenth to determine and impose the assessments. Uh, today we're requesting the board hold a public hearing and adopt the proposed budget. The assessments are used for maintenance and operation within the district for electrical street lighting that's actually owned and operated and maintained by PGNI. The Public Works recommends the board supervisors hold the public hearing and adopt the fiscal year budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. And this one also has no change to the assessments from last year.
Okay, at this point, we'll open the public hearing and ask for any board, uh, input, questions? Any questions from the public? Close the public hearing and get a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion, a second, roll call vote?
Supervisor Vasquez is absent. Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Three one three, Mike.
I'll come up to this side this time. It's Mike Lee with Community Development again. Uh, so this item here before you today, there's a, it's approximately one-third acre parcel at the southeast corner of, uh, River Oaks and Heartland Drive. The current situation of the property is it's burdened entirely with an open space easement and a drainage easement. Uh, that's, it's right, look, located right at the south end of the RD seven eighty-four lateral sixteen. I think the intent is, was originally that the canal was going to go further south. Seven eighty-four has owned that property for years and recently auctioned it off because they don't have a need for it. And so in order for the property, anything to be done with the property, we would need to abandon the, the open space and, and drainage easements. The staff is supportive of that because we don't really have a need for it as well. Um, however, there is a, and as shown on the exhibit in the resolution, there is a portion at the northwest corner, uh, that the drainage culverts at the south end of lateral sixteen, a kind of forty-five degree angle under River Oaks Boulevard. So they, they, they bisect the corner of this property. And so as part of this resolution, we are retaining the drainage easement over that area so that we can uh, get in and, and maintain and replace as needed in the future, the, the culverts under the road. Um, we did this, technically, we could have done a, a summary vacation on this. I chose to go the more formal, formal route with hosting the property, putting the, the advertisement in the newspaper. Because I wanted to give the, any potential neighbors an opportunity to, to speak at the public hearing if they had any concerns. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or, and/or see if there's any public comment.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Any board questions on this?
Not, not a question, but a comment. It's somewhat of a, a follow-up statement to, uh, Supervisor Fuhr's, uh, comment on a previous item, uh, related to kind of commercial, uh, more interspersed with, uh, various areas. I know, the property owner and what their, um, hopeful plans are for this property, the new property owner, and I'm very excited about them. So I'm glad, glad to see this moving forward and fully support it.
About how big was that property?
Uh, about, I think a third acre. Did we open the public hearing yet?
Yes, we did.
Good.
Any more board comment? Any public comment in the open hearing? Seeing none, we will close the, uh, public hearing and ask for a vote.
I move to approve.
A second.
Roll call vote?
Supervisor Vasquez is absent. Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're to the point of a board and staff member reports. Seth, have you got anything down there?
I have talked so much today.
Moving on.
So we've talked a lot today about the amazing, uh, bike pass coming to, uh, Plumas Lake and our Bogota. And I wanted to remind my fellow board members, uh, that this evening at six PM, at the very southern end of Plumas Lake, at the southern end of Atherton Way, uh, south of Feather River Boulevard, there will be a ribbon cutting, um, for a new section of Plumas Lake Bike Path that was recently opened on the west side of the community there. So I know Health and Human Services will be there, Public Works will be there. All be there. I think Supervisor Messick, uh, may be there. Uh, Blue Zones will be there. So, uh, I'd encourage people to, to come out, hopefully won't be too hot and, uh, go for a little, I think it's about a half mile, uh, walk or bike ride, uh, on the new path. So, uh, six o'clock.
Sounds great.
And, and one more, uh, thing to add to that, just real quickly, uh, related to SAACOG. So they had their monthly board meeting. It was actually in Sutter County, uh, last month. And, uh, so it was, or it was last week, but, uh, it was great to, uh, participate in that and, uh, have it here locally. They had a pop-up mobility hub on Pluma Street to kind of show, uh, what those will be. Yuba Sutter Transit was there, uh, other, other folks from the area, including Blue Zones were there. And later this week, uh, I leave tomorrow, uh, for a SAACOG trip to Denver, uh, to meet with the SAACOG equivalent, uh, in the Denver area. Learn about some of their, uh, recent, um, redevelopment and development in the Denver region as well as public transit there. So.
That's exciting. John?
Well, I just came off a fair week, so I don't know if any of you guys know it. I know Kevin knows what that's like. Camping out and living at the fair for a week, um, is just great to see all the four-H and FFA kids represent themselves so well in our community. It was just a really good time. And speaking of fairs, the Mountain Fair in Brownsville is coming up August seventeenth and eighteenth. I am coordinating a five K run, walk on the eighteenth. If anybody wants to give any input, help, sponsorship, please let me know. I'm trying to draw more people up the hill to go to the five K that will stay and actually go to the Mountain Fair and watch the logging demonstrations and things like that. Marysville Peach Pub Crawl is on. It's, the Peach Festival is still going to be on in Marysville despite the hotel issues. Uh, I think they're going to move a little, move it around a little bit. But, um, I'm involved with the Marysville Youth Shooting Sports Boosters Club and that's our main fundraiser. We host the Peach Pub Crawl on Thursday night of the Peach Festival. We have, I want to think eight bars participating this year. Grand prize is going to be a, um, three eighty pistol. And, uh, just hope you all come and support. It's a fun thing. I know Gary's gone to it in the past. I don't know if the rest of you done?
I've seen them stagger by the front of the brick.
So, yeah, the bricks involved this year and palomas, um, so the newer places and, uh, just a good way to get your exercise, wash, walking from pub to pub and sampling the peach drinks that they, uh, offer or waters. That's it.
Okay.
If I can interject for a moment, um, I was witness to, uh, the Great Brisket Cookoff, um, at the Yuba County, uh, Sutter County Fair. Um, and a certain gentleman on this dais won that first place of the Great Brisket Cookoff of twenty twenty-four and is now reigning champion, uh, for his culinary skills and cheating and buying fantastic cuts of meat.
So I'll follow up on that. Yes, I won the brisket, the Browns Valley Alley Brisket Cookoff at the fair. And by no, um, ability of my own, I bought a wagyu brisket from Yuba River Ranch, right here in Yuba County. And it was, Seth was one of the judges. He can tell you how much better that wagyu meat was and it, and it was, uh, raised right here in Yuba County.
Yeah, great. County Council, anything?
Nothing for me.
Kevin?
Uh, I'll just, I'll keep it brief. So a fun fact, so the Three Rivers Livy Improvement Authority, uh, the investment made in Yuba County to increase flood protection is over five hundred million dollars to date and, and counting. There's definitely more projects that Three Rivers plans to complete in the coming years.
Uh, anything from our?
Nothing.
County clerk?
Thank you.
I don't think I have anything. You guys kind of stole what I was gonna say. Uh, it does look like the Peach Festival is on. They had a meeting this morning. I think Kerry Hawk brought them up to speed on that. The, uh, city of Marysville seems to, uh, getting this under control on the fire. Uh, the, the, uh, detour routes, people are figuring it out, so it'll gradually settle down a little bit. I think that's about it. We're gonna go to, um, close session.
I should probably put out one more thank you to, uh, clerk staff, uh, for putting together the tour, uh, the gift basket, uh, some proclamation. So I wanted to say thank you for making that all happen. Um, I only do things in short timeframes. I give people lots of warning, like hours warning, and so they.
I think it was like ten hours, maybe.
Ten hours, lots of time. Thank you so much.
Well, can I make one more question? A question of, of county council. So Supervisor-elect House requested to be on that ad hoc committee, but we want clarification since he's elected. Would that be a put us three in, in a quorum or could he be on this ad hoc committee?
He's not sworn in yet, so he should be okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification from county council if he could be on that ad hoc committee with Supervisor Bradford and I up until January first, which hopefully we'll have it done by then.
Are you going to be allowing all members of the public to express they want to participate in this ad hoc committee?
Yeah. So he can participate as a member of the public and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a violation of the Brown Act? That's the clarification I want. Till he's sworn in, would he be able to participate as a member of the public? And we wouldn't be in violation of the Brown Act?
If you're gonna allow one member of the public to participate in the ad hoc committee, I would advise that anybody in the public who wants to participate would be allowed.
At the, at the meetings, the ad hoc committee meetings, yes. But still, I mean, I mean, well, so Supervisor Fuhr, he's also a member of the public, but he couldn't attend because then there would be a quorum of us. So I, I just want clarification that Supervisor-elect House could attend and we wouldn't be in violation of the Brown Act.
Up until January.
Up until he is sworn in.
That's correct, but if you're allowing one member of the public regardless of his status to be present at your ad hoc committee, my concern would be not opening it up to everyone. And currently your ad hoc committees are not subject to the Brown Act. So you wouldn't have to notice and open it up to the public?
So we could have him as a trails enthusiast representative?
Shouldn't be a problem.
Hallwood for it. Gary would like to interject here and Gary is correct for what he's about to say.
I would just say my understanding is that, um, supervisor elects are subject to the Brown Act, uh, in Kent. Do anything that an existing supervisor could not do.
Really?
That's my understanding. So if, if that's incorrect, legal counsel, I would, I would certainly appreciate a correction on that. But I've been in trainings, uh, for the Brown Act where it's been mentioned that it, the day you're elected, you are subject to the Brown Act. So in other words, uh, two of our board and a supervisor-elect could not talk about an item coming before the board, that that would be a violation, but.
That is correct.
Okay.
So it would be, um, a problem if he came to your ad hoc committee because then you would have technically three.
Okay. That's the clarification I wanted. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're gonna take a, uh, five-minute social break because we're gonna get out of here by noon. And then we're going to close session.
Yubasutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake. Where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.